I think I'm closed. Cool.
We'd like to call the work session to order. Gloria Peterson will not be here this evening. She's not filling well. Everyone else is present. The first item on the agenda is the budget review. Giovanna, 2024 budget review.
Hello, everyone. My name is Giovanna Neal. I'm the accounting director. I am going to briefly go over an overview of the budget, which will go through information that will be through all of the funds, all of the departments. So if you have any questions, just please stop and let me know. I know we've got a lot on the agenda today, so I'm going to try to go quick. But please stop me if you have a question. That's okay. Do you want me to start before we get our?
Oh, yeah, you can. Go ahead. Please.
Yeah, it's. So what I'm going to do is I'll be going over the millage rates, tax revenue, state shared revenue, basic expenditure assumptions that we've used for the budget, and pension and OPEB overviews. Last meeting, no, actually in August, we approved the L4029, which is our millages. I don't know if you want me to go over that or not. We did go over those. You have those in your budget books. The overview I put in your budget books. So I don't know. Without having it up, I don't know if you guys want me to?
Yeah, the biggest changes are?
Okay. Yeah, the biggest change is we did not have a headly rollback. And what we had done was the fire capital millage was completed this year for 23, so for 24. Yep, so for. That's okay. So for 24, we do not have the fire capital millage, so that dropped down. We did, however, on column nine, which is like the third column from the right to left. Third column, that's our millages that are allowable. Okay, the general fund's at the top at 9.9797. And you'll see the important column that we actually approved, what we requested the levies to be, is in column 11. That's the last column that's got millage numbers. And the difference that we make, if you look at the police millage, so what we could have asked for in what was prior year was 5.627. We asked for 5.5570. And the reason we did this was because on the pension millage at the bottom, well, we're not ready yet to go. At the pension millage, we changed it. We had to have an increase of .8800. So is there any questions on that? I mean, we went over these, and you guys approved this in August, so there probably is no questions on that. The next page is just historical view, in case you were wondering, you know, what it looks like before and right now. And again, the difference being the last columns on the right-hand side, with it being the 23, had the fire capital in it of .4818. And in 24, that is gone. Okay, next page.
We also had an increase in the fire, right? OPEB, fire pension went up?
Yes. So on the next page, we're going to go over the fire pension millage, which went from .8100 to .8800. And what we do is we try to have the millage pretty much be and collected what the actual required contribution is supposed to be. So that's where we put that number in. We just try to make sure that we have enough covered for the actual required contribution that the actuaries give us on the reports. Again, there was no headly rollback. The millage, excuse me, the police millage was just decreased by the .07 because we increased the pension .07. So it just kind of stayed the same. The next page.
Ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
So when we made an agreement to decrease the police, it was because we have historically not been able to get the deputies that we've been paying for. Is that correct?
Well, we actually did. We had some, we have a fund balance. We have a very healthy fund balance right now in the police millage in the fund. So we were able to decrease that a little bit because we didn't really need it this year.
Because we have a healthy balance?
Yes.
That's the rationale for that?
That's one aspect also is when we increased the fire pension from 88?
81 to 88.
So we shift to make sure that we can still levy the same amount of, don't increase the tax levy.
Right.
Even though we could.
Right.
By law, we try to keep it the same for taxpayers. So that was part of it, too.
And the healthy balance, though, is because we haven't been able to?
Absolutely.
Right?
Exactly.
To have to fund the deputies that we had been paying for. We've not been able to do that, not because we weren't wanting to, but because they haven't been able to hire enough staffing.
Correct.
Correct.
You're absolutely correct.
So that's where we decided we had enough leverage to make it even. Now, one went up, one went down a little bit to keep them the same. Okay, next page, page six. Again, the L4029 was approved in August. We went over what the taxable values were. Taxable value on that was, excuse me, Was an overall increase of 7% from prior year. The Renaissance Zone and properties with their exemptions that we put on the L4029 as well. You can see what those totals are here. That was a 7.4 increase over the prior year.
Joe, may I say something?
Yes.
In 2008, '09, '10, '11, we lost about 33% of our taxable value. We're almost made whole. We're almost back at that same number that we were in 2008.
Before '08.
Yeah. So it took us this long to recover. Some communities in the county has recovered quicker. But if we can get back up to those rates, that would be great. Some people don't realize we lost so much taxable value. I know Chief Copeland was here, and he remembers when that happened, and Joe, and Stan was on the board then, and Doug. And so we're getting back to pre-recession numbers.
Okay, and on page seven. So this overview is where I've taken the 24 budgeted tax revenues. How do I get the tax revenues? And it's based off of the taxable value of the 1.7 billion minus the Renaissance Zone. So that's 300, minus that 300, no, sorry, That's the Renaissance Zone, the pilots that we have, delinquent personal property taxes, Board of Review adjustments, the LDFA. And I do this calculation. And I actually put that on the bottom for you to see how I actually came up with the number that I use, the taxable value number that I use is the 1,668,925,016. It's the number that I used to come up with the revenues. And that'll be on the next page. But I just kind of wanted to show you my paperwork that I use. The next page just gives you a little bit of historical and what I did for the budget. So in the yellow column, that's what we budgeted for 23. The purple column is actually what came in. So the revenues we did collect. There's a difference of $160,614. So it was a very conservative, my calculations were pretty conservative. So it was a little bit more. We collected a little bit more than what I had thought. But I'd rather be a little bit more conservative and collect more than collect less. So on to the number in the blue. That is my budget for this year and how I did the calculations. And you can see that number on the top, the taxable value at 1.6 million up there. And then we do each of the millages. And on the next page, I actually show you how we come up with those numbers. So what you want to do is you want to take the taxable value, which I have, what I used, and the taxable, the millages, you times it by the millage. So this is all the millage with the. It's all of, yeah, all of the millage. And then you'll divide it by 1,000, and that'll give you the total amount that I project that we were going to collect. Any questions on how we come up with those numbers? And just do, you can do each one of the millages instead of the 13. You just do each one of them. If you want to find out what's in the funds, which I have on the page before, it shows you each one of the funds, what I projected the revenue to come in at. And then the administrative tax revenue that we collect. We get to collect a 1%. It doesn't include the special assessments. That amount I projected to be at 875,000 this year. We do have to use that for our assessment department and our treasury department. That's who collects the revenues for our taxes. That's how we get our revenues. So, and I projected those, both those departments, their expenditures at 1,62,710. So we're within that threshold. The next page. Is our state shared revenue. That is one of our biggest revenues for our general fund coming in. And that is, got a couple of numbers on here. It's a little confusing because the state gives us their budget, and their budgets are based on, oh, excuse me. Their fiscal year runs from October 1st to September 30th. And ours runs on a calendar year. So the numbers are always going to be a little skewed. So what I tried to do this year was just, I just gave you what they said we're going to have. What they said we're going to have. And, but they do update these throughout the year. So the latest one that I received, or I pulled off the state site web, you can go on the website and pull these up. The one that I have for 24 projected is a $6,751,761. That's a 1.5 increase from the projected amount in 23 of 6,650,214. The approved budget for 23 was at 6,328. So it's a big difference. It's always a shift when they, because they do their updating as well. So it's kind of hard to pin it down to one number. But it's usually, we're pretty close.
I have a couple of questions, if I can.
Sure.
I see that the revenue always comes in six installments.
Yes.
So my question is, is one of those installments on our 23 fiscal year and their 24 fiscal year? So when we do the budget, we're including two different?
Yes.
Fiscal years?
Yeah, they're not a whole lot off because I've tried to, I've tried to do some analysis and try to figure out what those last two ones are going to be that are not within. And it's pretty close to what it was prior. So I've used those.
Yeah.
I've just decided just to go ahead with what they have because it's pretty close. Ends up being fairly close.
So that's like once every two months? So in October through December, is that two installments?
Yes.
That we normally get?
Yes.
All right. And just out of curiosity, has the township ever thought about aligning their fiscal year with the state?
We talked about that with the two. I know, and the county, what is the county on? The same as the state?
Yep. No, the county's on the?
County's on different.
Calendar year, January to December. But, you know, our grants are October to September.
Oh, okay. And so is your state shared revenue? Do you get state shared revenue? Yeah.
Yeah.
Everyone's state shared revenue is?
Yeah.
Is on the state's fiscal year, so. It's a little, like I said, I've tried to do it, and it comes pretty close.
Yeah.
So I just went ahead and said, you know, it's so, because it's so hard to say, well, I used, you know, this from December to here, and then I, you know, did some projections for these other two. It's just easier just to go ahead and use their numbers. It comes in, it comes in fairly close. And like I said, they do change it. You know, they're updating. They're always updating. And most of the time when they do update, they give us more. So I like that.
Right, because they'll come in more than what they projected.
Yes, so. All right.
That difference was like between what they projected and what actually came in was 320,000 or something?
Yeah.
Yeah. So where does that money go to?
It still goes into the revenue.
Okay.
It's just, it's state shared revenue. We use that for our operations, basically for our general fund.
Okay, right, got you.
Because we do not increase our millage. Thank you.
Okay.
We depend greatly on the revenue sharing that we get.
Okay.
And there's two portions. There's two parts to this. There's the constitutional payment. That's the big payment that we get. And they use that as the census that we have. Excuse me, the 200, 200, 2,020 census is what they have on their paperwork at 55,670 is what they say. And then their multiplier for 24 is 1,109.532. It's on this bottom there. That's what they use to give us that constitutional portion. The other portion that we receive is the CVT RS, which is the city, village, township revenue sharing. I have a hard time figuring out how they do that. It's based on taxes somewhere, and they give us a percentage. But they actually, and I've got the figures for that in here. That is at 614,952. The prior year was, oh, I don't think I wrote the prior year in here. But, yeah, so it did increase. It did increase. And we actually are getting one payment for public safety this time around for 39,133. That's a one-time thing. We'll take it. Any questions on revenue sharing?
I don't know if you got to the headly yet?
There is no headly rollback this year. Yeah.
And I guess my question was the rate of inflation, if I understand it correctly. The rate of inflation is 3.7%. And so we haven't had an increase over that. The growth of property taxes did not exceed that amount. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's how they calculated it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. It's a rate of inflation.
Yeah.
It was 5%.
I don't know how, Lynda Goslin is our assessing director.
It won't go over 5%. Yeah.
We can't increase the values and collect taxes. You can increase them, but you can't collect more than 5% or the rate of inflation, whichever is less.
Yeah.
But this is constitutional payments. And my understanding is the state's looking at changing it again. I read an article. They're looking at changing state shared revenue to make it more reliable. But that never really happens because they always shift it from something else. So we'll have to follow that to see.
Yeah, the constitutional payment's pretty, pretty simple, pretty basic on that one. I don't know how they do their multiplier, you know, the projected amount, the 109. But that one's, I can understand that one. It's that CVT one that just, you know, there's certain percentages.
With state shared revenue in general.
Yeah.
They can, constitutionally, we can't change.
Right. Okay. So we are on to our expenditure assumptions. Again, these are going to go through all of the funds, all of the departments. All right? And the biggest expenses that we have here at the township are our wages and our fringes. That's what we have. We have people, you know, people to serve people. All the wages are increased by 3%. The elected official salaries are set by the board every year. So that would have to come back to the board to evaluate that increase. The fringes, excuse me. We have received a couple of the actual rates right now, and I'm sure all of you will be happy. But I'll just go right down the list here. Healthcare insurance, I budgeted that at an 18% increase. I never know from year to year what that's going to be. They base it on experience and a couple of other things. I think Karen could help, Karen Wallen could help on that a little bit. But it's based on experience. And we've done so well. People seem to be more healthy. We actually had a decrease of 5.5%, which is unheard of. I mean, that's the lowest I've seen it. So we're very happy about that. So I will be adjusting the healthcare numbers on our budget. That'll be a considerable drop. The vision, we do have actual number on that. It's a 7% increase. Disability and life insurance, I've estimated a budget increase of 2%. Dental, I budgeted at 10%. We do have numbers in on that now. The increase was 4.6. So another good number, and I will be adjusting again the budget.
So that healthcare insurance decrease was more than 13% because it was?
I budgeted 18. So I'm going to have to, yes, so it's. I'm going to adjust it down to 20, almost 23. Yeah, so 23% difference.
Yeah, okay. Which is substantial?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is. Because you're looking at probably, probably 2 million?
Yeah, we've actually, over the last four years, the highest increase that we've had is like 4% on our healthcare rates. So we've done really well over the last four to five years. But this year, it actually did come in a negative 5.5 from this year's rates. So that was a really good, really good experience.
And we do budget for the 18 because I have been here when it came in at 18. And I did not budget 18. So that hurt. So.
Right.
So I'd rather go ahead and budget higher, wait for the numbers because we usually get them in the fall. So we just got them a couple last week or the week before. You know, after I gave you guys the drafts.
Okay.
So, but, so it was good news all around. Then we're going to move on to page 12. This is the, what we have to have for the pensions. So we got two pensions. We've got the general, and we've got fire pensions. We have both the pension, and then we have OPEB for their healthcare. All right? So the first one I'll go over is the general employees' MERS pension. And what we need as far as the annual required contribution or the annual determined contribution, they're using a new phrase. But, oh my goodness. The table on the bottom actually is the best way to actually look at this. And you can see from 2021 and 22 what our liabilities are, what our unfunded accrued liability is, the funded ratio. And then at the bottom line is the annual determined contributions. And you can see the increase at the bottom from last year. These are always based on numbers that are two years behind. That's why you can see the 22 up there for the 24 contribution. Any questions on that one? The next one is the general OPEB for healthcare. That one decreased just a little bit from 171,558 to 162,754. I have budgeted 200,000 for that. And I think what I would like to do today is even ask, maybe you might want to consider putting a little bit more in. And I'll show you on my next screen. I'll show you why I think we might want to put a little bit more in that. But what I budgeted was, we have 24 active employees that were hired before 2014. So we've got two different tiers. If they're hired before 2014, I have budgeted for each one of the employees 8,400. If you're hired after that, then we have a different healthcare savings plan. So this is a closed fund. That's why you see the amounts going down each year. But we have 24 active people in there. And then I budgeted 8,400 for each one of the active people. And the next page shows you why I think we might want to increase that a little bit. Our actuaries gave us a scenario. And you'll see the scenario on the bottom. Now, remember, I asked, so the required contribution was that 162,000. I budgeted for 200. And I looked at this scenario that they have. And both of the scenarios, you can see the 162 at the 6.5. That's assuming we're going to have an interest rate of 6.5% does last column. And I did 200, which I thought was well above the 162,000. But their scenario has it at 342. If we get 7%, though, it would be 289,000. So I thought maybe I'd ask if you would like to increase that 200,000 a little bit. Or we can just leave it because it is hitting, it's over the required contribution. So that would just be something to think about. And you can let me know. We'll address it again. Is there any questions on that? I actually, this italicized is right from the actual aerial report. I just copied it right from there so you could read what they had to say. Right. The next page is for the retirement healthcare savings plan that we have for everyone who was hired after 2014. Since we have a closed pension, we actually are putting funds into a savings account for them for healthcare, and that is budgeted at $1,300 per employee. There are 60 positions, and so the budget is at 78,000. Fire pension, same thing. I love the chart at the bottom. Again, it shows you exactly, you know, what we have as far as, you know, what our actuarial responsibilities are, what our planned assets are, what the fund ratio is. And then again, the annual determined contribution. And that is what I have budgeted at 1,180,82. And then the next page is the fire OPEB. Again, you know, the amount projected for the 24. Again, you know, the amount projected for the 24 is at 288,545. And then, again, this is a closed OPEB that we have. And then we offer healthcare savings plans for those hired after 2014 for the firefighters as well. And that is, township contributes 5,330 per firefighter, and we have 19 personnel. So the budget that I have is 100, 101,270. What I did a little bit differently this year that I did not do in previous years was I actually put in what we had budgeted for 23. These are our capital and, you know, bigger, bigger projects because it's got some equipment in here. This is our capital that we actually have budgeted, alright? And if you look, there's an asterisk at streetlight construction and an asterisk at the transfer to BSR2 funds. And what we had done was we had approved a 1,000... A $7,000 difference. So we moved 7,000 from the streetlight construction, and we put it down to the road improvement to go to BSR2 because we had funds for, from the ARPA fund for streetlights. So we didn't need that, but we really do need improvement to our roads. So you, you had approved to do a line transfer to do that, the board approved that. And so what I wanted to say for 24, 24 budget, this is what we have right now in, in our draft. And this is all for general fund, this is not other funds, this is just all general. Right, and then the next page. These are all the budgets amendments that have been approved so far this year for 2023. For all of, and it's got very brief descriptions on these. Most of them are capital improvement for 2,219,988. So those are all that I brought before the board that you've approved. And then the last page. The last page is actually how we're doing. So we got the general fund, what the fund balance was at 22, so the ending of 22. Our budget for 23, we need, from the prior fund balance, we needed 2,76,231. All of the additions that we added, that we approved of, the 2,219,988. The projected fund balance, so if you take the 8 million above in 22 and you subtract those, you've got 4,157,912. That leaves you with a fund ratio in 23 of 40.3%. And then what we have budgeted so far for 24 is the 1,878,366, which gives you a projected fund balance of 2,279,546, which leaves you with a fund debt ratio of 20.7. We like to keep it between, between 20 and 25. I, I like to keep it a little higher, but, you know, we did need some capital projects done. So we've done quite a few projects, as you can see. Do you have any questions on that?
Just have a comment. I, you know, at first glance, it looks like the fund balance has gone down, but at second glance, it shows an efficient use of funds and just shows how the taxpayer dollars are being used.
Yes, those are all, that's why I put those in there, because they're mostly all capital improvement projects.
Yeah.
So it's something that's gone back into our infrastructures and capital that we needed to. Roads, streetlight, you know, all, all kinds of things. But yeah, it's capital improvements. So we're still doing really well at, at projected 20.7%.
We try to never operate from your fund balance.
Correct.
You always want to...
Yeah, yeah, because it's really not a sustainable practice.
Correct, so capital improvements for fund balance is a better way for us.
Yeah.
We always, that's the way we've done it.
Yeah.
Okay, so that concludes...
Good business practice.
Yes, that concludes my overview. Is there any questions?
Thank you for that complicated work.
Any questions or comments on just, is this just a high-level overview of the entire 2024 draft budget? And we will, you know, perfect it as we go along and go over, we'll go over the general fund and the different funds at a work session. But the actual hard copy is in everyone's mailbox, we put them in there. So it's hard to look on those screens on your laptop, I know. The next item on the agenda is the resolution for the special assessment levy. We have to do this every year. Any questions or comments on that? The next item is public comments, if there's any public comments. I know Ms. McCollum was waiting for the agenda on the fence, but if you'd like to speak to it at this point, you're welcome.
Hello, yes. Okay, my name is Joanne McCollum. I live in Ipsley Township in West Willow. And yes, I am here to answer any questions about the fence that we requested to be put around the community garden in West Willow, which is, I believe, the first garden of Growing Hope. Was one of the first gardens. And the same person, Mrs. Linda Meiling, is the same person when it was started, I guess, 20 years ago or whatever. She is still working on that garden. And if you all are in West Willow, please come and get some tomatoes. So anyway, any questions that you have, thank you for your time in looking at this and going through all the procedures and what have you, and seeing what needs to be done and letting us use the property to help our community. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
We have consent agenda, we have the minutes of the work session and the regular meeting. There is discussion.
Yeah, I would, Madam Chair, would just say, if anyone has edits to the minutes, we are always more than willing to make changes to the minutes, but we need you to provide them to us. So if anyone has edits that they want to make from the last meeting, please give them to me or Lisa, and we'll proceed that way.
So then we'll table these minutes and provide it?
Yeah.
Because we can't approve them without...
Yeah, and we can do that. But we're always, our office is more than happy to always make changes to the minutes if we know about them.
I was thinking about perhaps having, I know there's draft minutes that are due. And then maybe if we could share the draft minutes and we could look at them before...
Yeah, and I, you know, we're always happy to make minute changes and whenever you guys want to hear them or... Like, our office has been nothing but accommodating to making changes. So if there's any perception that that's not true, please address your concerns with me. We're more than happy to make changes as needed.
I was, I was going to ask how we could make edits to the minutes, but we, we would need to listen to the audio.
Yeah, and, and also, you know, our packet goes out on Fridays, so you have chance to read them over between then and the board meeting.
Yeah.
Any minutes, I mean, we table minutes sometimes if you have edits to make.
Okay.
I think it would be better if we got the draft minutes and then we could see them even before Friday. That would be helpful. That's just an idea I'm trying to...
Yeah, I'm, whatever people want. And we actually put our minutes into a, like, audio thing, and we could send you those, but those are very hard to read because they catch every um and an that we make. So whatever changes you guys want to the meeting minutes, please send them to Lisa and I.
I think my concern is about the policy and the procedure of how minutes are done.
Yeah.
So my understanding is that MTA has a recommendation, and if we're following that, that's kind of clear. If we're not following that, then that becomes less clear, and the opportunity for minutes to become subjective is concerning. That's my concern.
Yeah.
So I think a lot of residents aren't necessarily able to come to meetings. I understand that part. They could, they could listen to audio, I understand that part. But I think that a lot of work is done on behalf of residents by staff and by trustees, and I don't know that the minutes capture that. So that's the piece where I'm struggling with. How, when there are comments or things, like, it's easy, like, I sent one that was a type. Oh, that's an easy, easy fix. My concern isn't when it gets to, like, comments and which comments are included and they're not included. And I'm not trying to do anybody's official capacity, that's not what I'm trying to do. I'm just trying to make sure that residents have an opportunity to see official minutes that demonstrate the work of the board that's being done. So that's my place where I'm trying to understand that. I don't think we have an official policy that explains, like, how we're doing that. And I think that it would serve us all better to know exactly how that's happening. So I might look at something and think that's really important to document. Someone else might look at something and think that's important to document. And I don't think we have real good, like, policy to figure out how do we all make a decision about that and then... It's true, if, if there's been something that's been taken off the audio and it's been put in a comment, you, your office and your department has done a, you've been open to any suggestions that I've made. So I'm not suggesting this as trying to attack anybody or say somebody's not doing it. I'm just trying to understand how we make sure what we officially give to the public is done in a way that everybody understands how we're doing it. So like, the MTA recommendation, if that's what we're doing, that's easy to understand, and I think the public should know we're using the official recommendation of the MTA. I'm not saying I necessarily agree with that, I'm just saying it's real clear. It becomes less clear when we're picking out things that we think might be important. And, and then, I'll be quick with this, sorry, if I'm going on and on. I think one of my biggest concerns right now is misinformation that's circulating in our community. And when there's misinformation, it gets really hard to take care of a community in a way that's healthy and doesn't cause harm. And so I'm prepared, as a trustee, to interact with the public and residents when it's an accurate representation of what's happening. I'm prepared to have those conversations with residents because we are not always going to agree. I understand that, and I can learn from people, maybe people can learn from me. With so much misinformation circulating, it gets hard to represent people in ways that are respectful. And then it also causes harm just because we have a lot of people who work here that take really good care of the residents or try to do that part. I don't, I haven't come across anybody who's purposefully trying to do something that's harmful. But we're going to disagree over things. And when that happens, I think the public has to know exactly what we're trying to do. And I don't feel like that always happens. Like, we have something on our agenda tonight. This board has not agreed to create our own police department. We have not agreed to do that. So the only way somebody's going to know that is if they have, like, records of the work that we're doing, because people cannot come to our meetings all the time. They can't listen to an audiotape. That's what they elected us to do. And they're going to get a chance to make decisions in a short period of time about how that's going to do. So that's my concern. I see harm. I personally see harm happening in our community over misinformation. And I don't want to be a part of creating chaos over misinformation. We have enough of that in the world. So when something's out there and everybody knows what it's really about, then people can stick to that part of it. Last meeting, we had a lot of people come and express viewpoints to us, and open to hear it, we sat and we listened to hear it. There was nothing in the business of the board that was going to take funding away from any organization. Wasn't going to happen, that's not what it was about. It was about two things, that, it was about dispatch and it was about patrol. That's what it was about. And so when people get concerned about people they care about, and they come and they speak out, that's a good thing and we need to hear it. But the things that we were hearing that people were concerned about was never something that this board was going to do. And because we sat and we listened carefully and we took all that in, our minutes don't reflect what it was really about or the process that led to it. We don't, as a rule, go about just going after people without trying to resolve things by meeting, by saying we disagree with this. We don't, as a rule, try to do that. But you wouldn't know that from our minutes. We know that because we're all communicating and we're being updated. And so anyway, that's my concern. And how we resolve that, that's not going to be fixed tonight. But I do think we have some work to do as a board about what we are going to do with minutes. And maybe that's just the clerk's office and you get to decide, and then we all have to go with that? I don't know. I'm, I'm doing my best to learn the role of a trustee. My end goal is to make sure that the public knows what work is being done on their behalf in the most accurate way possible. So that if they, so just so the misinformation is probably going to happen, but there's someplace to go where they can say, no, I looked at that, and that isn't what that was about.
Thank you. So we're going to table these minutes?
Sure.
And then commit and work on perfecting the process.
Yeah, and I'll just say, Madam Chair, like, if anyone wants to... So Debbie, I was shared with you the MTA recommendation, just to share that that, like, I know of that policy. We do not have a policy, we haven't had a policy for how board minutes are done since I've been on the board in 2016. And occasionally it'll come up, and this is a thing. And I'm, you know, I like policy too in a process. So I'm happy to entertain any ideas like that. But I, I do, and I think everyone here's heard, if you have edits to the minutes, we're more than happy to reflect those. And I will just also add, like, the other hard part that comes when you're doing minutes is that it's a reflection of whatever was said, or like, what happened at the meeting. And we also ourselves don't sometimes share, like, whether it's the good things that we've done in the commu... We don't always share those things at board meetings. So we can't, you know, I wouldn't feel right adding those additional things unless they were, they were talked about at the meeting. So that's another thing and lends to, does our township have another, like, medium of communication, as in a newsletter or, you know, some other ideas that we've discussed in the past? But anyways, our office is open to suggestions and edits. Please send them to us.
Alright, the next item are the statements and checks, treasurer's report, attorney's report. Under old business, we have the second reading of the resolution 202312, which is the zoning ordinance amendment changes. And I know Jason is here. The question was asked at the last meeting, did we notify residents of any of the changes that were occurring?
Good evening Township Board of Trustees, Jason Iguanelli, the Township's Planning Director. Based on the changes that are before you this evening, the changes... Um, based on the changes that are before you this evening, um, the changes that were made did not require notice, individual notices be sent directly via mail to property owners that would be affected. So the township is required by the State Zoning Enabling Act to notify individual property owners when they are making a township initiated rezoning or re, um, rezoning through a map amendment are the two times that you're required to send out direct notices to, um, property owners. So the changes that we're making in the use table, although they affect uses in certain zoning districts, no zoning districts are actually changing as a part of these amendments, just the uses inside of them. And so we feel as a planning department that the uses that we're actually putting into the districts are actually a benefit to the property owners and the people who are already there. And then some of the uses that we're taking out, we, even though we're removing them, we still feel it's a benefit to the property owners because the uses, there are uses that have not come into those zoning districts yet. And our apprehension is that, uh, developers would come forward and want to build those uses. So a prime example is in the IT or the industrial technology district, which is primarily the area near James L. Hart Parkway and Joe Hall Drive. One of the uses that was listed as a permitted use that we removed was mini storage because we don't believe that the township in all of its planning and master planning would be comfortable with a mini storage facility being developed in that zoning. So we simply moved mini storage from that zoning district to the other industrial zoning districts, one of which is off of Rossenville Road where there already is mini storage businesses. And then also to the IC district, um, which is sort of that area in and around, uh, the Willow Run Airport area. Um, if someone wanted to, you know, purchase property there and put in a mini storage facility, that would be appropriate. It was basically changes, um, akin to that. And then again, I don't want to go over too much, um, but I'm happy to answer questions. You know, we, we simplified some of the manufacturing, made it a little bit more user-friendly. And then also you, uh, in, installed like a green, um, different green elements into our ordinance, like battery production, um, you know, solar farms, uh, things that didn't exist, uh, in the past. But we feel like there's, um, in anticipation of those types of businesses coming to areas like in and around the ACM as they try to diversify, not from just, you know, what they were doing before, which is autonomous vehicles, but to the new technologies today. So we're just trying to anticipate things that were, are coming and then look at what some of those land uses were and try to pull back some of the ones that really didn't meet, uh, the township's intent. So sorry, that was a really long answer to a really short question. Um, and the answer is no, uh, we did not send out individual notices because it wasn't statutorily required.
I'm the one that asked about that. So I think the area that, when I asked the question was the area that's over by, um, the zone that we're trying to develop over, um, by State, yeah, State Street over there. And there's some existing homes. And that, if I recall correctly, um, if the house is sold, that it would not be able to be a home. That's the part that I think I was concerned about. So, um, and I, I'm also, I'm a little, I know statutorily what we're responsible for, but I also think that, um, when you're talking about somebody's house and their livelihood, I think even if we're not statutorily responsible for it, um, I think being good stewards of our community, it would be good to let people know that. That's the area that, uh, some of the other stuff I was la-, I was less worried about. I'm worried about the people who have a home.
Well, to be clear, those homeowners that are in that, uh, industrial district can sell their house. They can sell their house. They can expand their house. They can even rebuild their house in the event that there's a fire or disaster per the ordinance. So houses that existed on the books prior to the adoption of one of the prior ordinances, and I can't remember the date off the top of my head, are allowed that, that protection. But if the house ever ceases to be a house, like say someone passes away and it goes into probate, someone buys it and it sits vacant or derelict, then if someone were to come in and want to try to reuse it then, there would be an argument that, yeah, I can no longer, it, it, they're basically non-conforming uses where they're allowed to exist as long as the use continues and they're even allowed to sell it to someone who can use it for that use. But if it ever goes away in such a way that someone doesn't want it to come back, so like, say there's a fire and someone says, you know what, I'm just going to take the insurance money and leave, um, they can do that. But then no one can come back and buy like a lot and say, build a house. Just like now, if someone bought a vacant lot over there and said, well, I want to build a house across the street from this one, you can't. So hopefully, I mean, that gives you a little bit of peace of mind. It's sort of an odd situation and there's only probably a couple of dozen houses in that neighborhood.
And it does, it doesn't really give me peace of mind just because, I mean, I feel like when someone's put their investment in that particular way, anything that we can do that makes what you just said really clear to somebody, I think is helpful. Um, so I don't know, you know, if we're not going to give them notices, um, and I guess it could be said, you know, people need to know what we're doing. But again, I don't know that the average resident, I don't even want to say average. I think, I'm not sure that everybody understands some of those decisions or whether they got the information that we're doing it. And I just feel like, I just want to make sure that we do everything we can to make sure things are clear for people. Because again, information's really powerful. If they, if, even if they disagree with what we do, if they know the parameters of what they can do, they can communicate to somebody who wants to buy it, they can communicate, like they can do those types of things. It's hard to do that when, you know, like you're a planner, you know more than I do. I just feel like it makes things so much easier for people. Then people don't feel like they've been, um, I mean, every day you hear, they're counting on us to make really good decisions on their behalf. And I think we hit the mark almost all the time, but anything that we can do to make it easier to let somebody know, do we have to? Maybe not. But I still think it's much better than having somebody in the end find out something that they didn't know that impacts their livelihood.
Sure. And I can appreciate that. And I would say too, that if we felt from a departmental standpoint that what was being asked was in some way going to take away and/or harm, you know, be an adverse land use that people would be extremely upset, that they, you know, were somehow left in the dark, we wouldn't, you know, under my leadership, we wouldn't do something like that. If I thought something was going to be controversial and really be something where residents were going to want to come in and, and have their say on zoning law, uh, we would absolutely send notices even if it wasn't required per the state.
I'm not saying you are, I'm just saying, well, it can be easier for the public. There's probably lots of 20 houses over there. Just make sure they understood all the things that you're saying, like the good things that can come from it and that, so that when they get that, um, there's no gotcha.
Right.
So I'm not saying anybody's trying to do that, but I'm just thinking like if I were a homeowner there and I didn't know, and then somehow I ended up, I don't know, making a decision, but I didn't know full gratification, which I should almost. But people are living really busy lives and they don't, that's the thing.
Sure.
So maybe it's something like this, or maybe we don't, maybe it's a newsletter or something that does make those areas, what's going on here, some good things about it, but here's a page you need to be attentive to, I would be in favor of this. When we sent the letters.
To the Galt Village residents, it makes a difference because they all knew, they knew the schedule. And even when we're off track from that schedule, they all kind of knew where we were headed. They knew what the target was. And so I had act, been places where actual residents were telling other people because they had the information. They could spread the correct information and that's what's helpful on my mind.
Okay.
You do a great job. You've put your whole heart in the zoning that I think is going to make really, it's going to help the township as things move along. So thank you for that.
Okay.
And, and what you did with, because you were part of the Galt Village communication with people.
Right.
It goes so much smoother.
Okay. We'll keep that in mind the next time we have a major, another bigger, big batch ordinance, uh, amendments that come through.
Mr. Winner? What I was, what I was going to suggest is that because there are only about two dozen homes, that we could have a letter drafted to basically summarize that the are for all practical purposes, quote, grandfathered young. We've done that in the past. Many years ago, we had a, uh, R5 zoning district that was created by a different group of planners at the time, and that resulted in many non-conforming properties, uh, throughout the northern part of the township. And if people went to refinance their property or went to get an improvement, they had difficulty getting a bank loan because, uh, they were in a now, I quote, non-conforming situation. And so we went out, we actually sent out letters, if you recall, Madam Supervisor, to the people that were affected. And so they took those letters and they were able to take them to the bank to, uh, stage any concerns. So I would just suggest, I was going to suggest that, that given the two dozen or so homes, that maybe a letter can just go out to that effect, that they are, it's a change, it won't affect what they do if they want to build, rebuild, if, in the event of a fire, expand, et cetera. They have a, a letter that later on may give them more of a comfort than, uh, so whoever is here at the time will have, they'll have the letter that we will.
And we've written those letters in the past on homeowners' behalfs when they've contacted us as a part of like their remortgaging process. So we'd be more than happy to, to send letters out to those homeowners in that area with that information. That's not, not a problem.
I do think it's going to increase their value for selling. I do think that, um, but, but making sure they know that they can still live there and pass it on for generations.
We can do that. Not a problem.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
Just so I understand, so a person, a homeowner in that district or area can sell their home and another person can buy it without, and it'd still be that, it'd still be for home use?
That's correct.
Okay.
So there's these, there's a non-conforming part of the ordinance, and I won't go into too deep of a dive, but any, any zoning or any property that has a land use on it that somehow gets left behind by a rezoning as things change, doesn't mean like the business has to close or, uh, it sunsets or anything like that. It, it can remain in use until such time that it just, and you can even sell it and someone else can use it the same way. It just, once that use ceases, it, it, it's no longer allowed to come back. So a good example of that is all of the industrial zoning that was along US 12 on the south side up against the railroad tracks. We made a decision to rezone all of that to regional mixed-use corridor. And all of those industrial properties at that point became non-conforming. Doesn't mean they have to close or change. They can even sell the property to someone else who wants to run the same business. But if it ever ceases operation, it can no longer come back in that capacity. So it's, it's legal, but non-conforming with regard to the zoning district that it's in.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Jason, do you want to give a quick update on Galt Village now that you're?
I know that, uh, Jason Lafayette from SME had sent a letter to my attention, Mr. Beller's attention and Mr. Winter's attention. And I think Doug, you were going to probably give a bit of an update during your report on Galt Village, so I don't want to steal your thunder. But I, I will say that we're very pleased in my department that the buildings are coming down in very quick succession, um, without a lot of, uh, a lot of issues. And so I was out there today to take a look and noticed that they had their different piles of recycling material and stuff that was going to go to the, to the dump. So it's, it's, it's happening very quickly at this point.
My apologies. Um, thank you, Jason. Number one is resolution under new business for temporary road closure for the Calvary Baptist Church. Any questions on that? Request approval of the benefit and compensation package for new fire chief, Steve Denzmore, who is here. Welcome to your first meeting. You didn't get paid, but welcome. Is it my kind?
Sorry. Uh, as you see, we are pleased to announce that we have finished the process for, um, the fire chief. And, um, I have prepared a compensation package, which you have a copy of. And, um, Mr. Denzmore has actually seen that and signed it. And he is actually here tonight, um, and will come up and answer any questions that you might have of him. Also, I left a packet of information in front of everybody's seat tonight. I did not put it in the agenda, um, only because it is his personal information. But, um, it does include, um, his application and resume and all of his training and certifications. Um, he comes to us, um, highly skilled and, um, has had many years in the fire service. And, um, we're excited. I know, um, a couple of the full-time employees, um, officials and a few employees were able to actually meet him last week when he dropped by. Um, but he is here tonight to meet the rest of the board. So Steve, if you want to come on out?
Karen, do you want these back?
Yeah. I thi-, I think so. Or if you destroy, I mean, if you, I, I just don't want it out there floating around. So.
Good evening, justices. Uh, Steve Denzmore. Um, happy to be here with you folks this evening. Um, I can answer any questions if you, you have, uh, at a particular time. Um, I'm very happy to be here as well, uh, work with you and for you. Uh, as soon as I get all my contact information, um, I'm sure you'll know it before I do, but please reach out if you have any questions, any concerns, anything I can do to help you.
Can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Um, originally come from, uh, the Dearborn Fire Department. Um, back in 2012, we did a complete merger, uh, with the city of Dearborn. I was hired in 1996 by the city of Melvindale Fire Department as a career firefighter. Worked my way all the way up to the fire chief. And in 2020, excuse me, 2012, the, uh, mayor came to me and said that she can no longer afford the fire department and the police department as well. So the easiest thing to do at the time was to fold the fire department into another community. And I, myself and the fire chief of Dearborn, Joseph Murray, uh, at the time, uh, we made a full zipper. We called it a merger, uh, between the two departments. And I was made the assistant chief of the Dearborn Fire Department and held that rank, uh, for the last 12 years with a combined total service between both cities of 27 years. Um, I saw the process come up for the position here of, uh, Epsom County Township and, uh, went ahead and started your, the, uh, application process and was, uh, very lucky to become the number one candidate. And I thank you for all, for all your support on that as well. Uh, come to you, I'm also a licensed paramedic. Uh, I hold a professional emergency management, uh, course through the state police to help with natural disasters. Uh, have a lot of National Fire Academy credits under my belt, bachelor's degree, of course, uh, through Santa Heights. Um, handled several major disasters along with the fire department, uh, with emergencies. Uh, latest one was the COVID-19 where we did a complete vaccine center for the, for the residents of basically Wayne County. Uh, we were instrumental in doing that. And I could probably go on and go on and do want to bore you with, uh, too many of the facts there. But again, super happy to be here with you folks. Um, looks like a great community. Can't be wait to be part of it. And like you say, work with you and for you at the same time.
You're a fire marshal?
Yeah, oh yes, ma'am. Sorry. So also, uh, within my duties at Dearborn, I also saw the, uh, the, uh, Fire Marshal Division saw also all the certifications of a fire marshal, plans review, fire inspector two, also code official of the state of Michigan. So I'm very anxious to work with, uh, our, our fire marshal here as well and possibly learn some things from him as well, as, as well, so.
And we want to thank Steve.
Yes, absolutely.
Lawren for stepping in his interim between our chief retiring. And he was here earlier and I'm, I'm glad you got to see him.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you, Steve, for all that you've done as well. Any questions of our new fire chief?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Happy to be here.
Thank you. All right.
So he is ready to go as of next Monday, so. So, he is ready to go as of next Monday. So, we're excited. And I think, I think Mr. Walgren might be excited, too.
And the HR?
Yes. I'm happy for the process to be done. And we're looking forward to our next step. I've already told him, Doug and I have talked, I mean, we're going right into negotiations. So, we're, he's going to be put in the, put to test really quickly. But, all right?
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Welcome. The next item on the agenda is to fill the community resource coordinator. It was a pilot position, and Lori was appointed almost a year ago in October. And we said at the time that we would bring it back to see and evaluate how successful it has been, or did it not work? And it's, we, everyone agrees, I think, that we should definitely make this not a pilot, but a full-time position. And at the time, we agreed or discussed reposting it. Honestly, I would prefer not, but I know that that's what this board said. So, if that's what we said we're going to do, we should do it. And I know that. But I do not want to, for the record. So, do you want to go, did I summarize it?
Yeah, no, you're good. I'm just, we had said that we would come back. I think, I don't want to speak on your behalf, but I know of many employees here in the Civic Center, we have seen positive results in the benefits of this position for sure. And so, HR is coming in full support of filling this position on a permanent basis. And it no longer be a pilot position, but it'd be a permanent position. Yes. And we had started out with the pilot at $40,000 a year. We are recommending that the position be posted for $50,000 a year. And that's also what was put in the draft budget as well. So-
Madam Chair, Karen, I, what, how would, like, PTO would just follow whatever structure the non-union?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
And I also included, again, I wasn't in the packet, I apologize, but the job description that was approved by the board last year is in that folder that I left at your seats.
We can make this part of the packet, perhaps?
Yeah.
Any comment, questions? I just cannot say enough. I think the board making a move to have hire a social worker to help connect people to resources has been a far better decision than I ever thought it would be as a board member who voted for it. And Lori, part of it is the person who's in the position probably, because she has the connections and the network to help people get through. When we have ordinance has an issue and they want to connect someone to services, Lori calls this position, calls everyone back. And Neighborhood Watch is critical to that support, has helped HR tremendously.
Yeah, I mean, she's provided training on, for our office staff, on how to, what's the word, decelerate? Is that, is that the right?
Deescalate.
Deescalate, thank you. Couldn't think of it. Deescalate situations that we have at the counters and things like that. And I got great feedback from that training from the employees. So, that was good that we had somebody right internal to do that, too.
And the assessing department and the treasures department. And it's just amazing how many people will come in and they're just looking for just a little help and guidance and having someone that can do that, you know. Five days a week, although she, this position has done it more than five days a week. And the benefit for the community has been amazing. And I would encourage other communities to hire positions like this. Because a lot of times, different people are trying to help different people, but we're not really expert. This position is an expert to connect them and get through the hoops.
I would add, Supervisor Samuel, that I work, you know, for people who don't know, I'm a teacher in my day job. And just the amount of times that I'll get information and then knowing, oh, you live in Ypsilanti Township, I could do this, like, we have a newer social worker. And so, this position, Lori, has helped us even in the school system for me to know what to do and then has been instrumental in helping us move our ARPA funding that we sent to barrier busters forward. So, thank you for that.
So, she, this position helps lift people up and connect them to services that are available in our county, in our state. But we never can get people connected. And it's just the beginning. It hasn't been a year yet, but the results and the vision to do it was a good one. All right. Thank you, Lori, for our pilot position. Your blessings. The next item on the agenda is request to approve the leave time policy for PTO accrual for non-union employees hired after January 1st, 2009.
Yes. As my memo said, we have not done anything with this policy since 2014. So, we're looking almost 10 years ago. So, it needed to be, it needed to be updated. So, I have for all areas, union groups, and made sure that the policy actually does match the union contracts. So, that was part of it. But what's happened is basically since 2011, when employees were hired, they were hired and given X amount of PTO. But there has not been a structure developed to allow them to increase that original amount of PTO. So, when all other employees would reach five-year mark, they would get an increase in PTO. The non-union employees did not have any kind of structure that was set up to give them anything. You know, it is a nice, in the HR world, when we hire someone to be able to say, this is your benefit, this is what you start with. But you can see the progression after years of service. So, I'm coming to the board asking that this policy be updated, for the non-union employees to actually receive a structure of PTO accrual to move everyone, because some of those non-union employees were getting sick banks and PTO banks, vacation banks, and that is a nightmare for payroll. We would like to put everybody under just one PTO structure. Although the amount of sick time and PTO time, vacation time was pretty much the same across the board, it was just split into different banks. We can just put it all into one bank, make everybody uniform, and it's just for bookkeeping purposes, it's just much better. So, I am recommending that the non-union employees follow the Teamster contract, because that is the management union. And non-union employees do follow that Teamsters contract on our retirement benefits and other benefits. So, it just makes sense to follow the Teamsters contract as well. One thing that was brought to my attention this afternoon, that I did not actually put in the accrual structure in my memo. So, that is one more item that is included in that folder. So, it would just, right now, we have a couple employees that have been here for seven or eight years, and they're still at a PTO accrual of what they were when they were hired. So, it would give them an increase, and then it would allow other people an opportunity to know when they get to that five-year mark, they will get an increase in their PTO.
Questions are coming?
You want everybody on the same?
When I say that, it's just PTO time versus split.
Right. And so, do we have to, like, work with the unions to do that? Have they already agreed to do that? Or?
No, they're already there.
They're already there. So, this is just the last one that we need to do to make sure it's all the same?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We do the same healthcare, you know, everything the same, but we didn't-
We didn't do this.
Madam Chair, just Karen, whenever you go back up, you just make sure we have that accrual thing electronically so we can put it in?
Sure.
Is it okay, it's okay to put it in there?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is request to approve the local brownfield revolving fund grant agreement for environmental testing associated with the demolition of Galt Village.
Good evening, Township Board. Jason Ikowanjali, the planning director. If you'll remember back to about this same time last year, the township with utilizing SME and Washtenaw County's Brownfield Authority was awarded some funding through the Downriver Brownfield Consortium in the amount of $20,000. And as a part of that, the way that this grant is set up is they made an amendment to that initial grant of $20,000 to allow $10,000 to be used towards cost overages for the hazardous materials assessment that we were getting ready to embark upon. And so, the original $20,000 was for an investigation, environmental investigation for the dry cleaners, the Galt Village dry cleaners. However, we amended our request based on the need for additional dollars for the hazardous materials assessment, and they agreed with that. And so, although this grant is for $20,000, $10,000 is what this grant contract is for, it would be a reimbursement for monies that we've already expended with SME to do the hazardous materials assessment. And there would still be this $10,000 left at the Brownfield Authority in the event that we ever wanted to explore the dry cleaners, you know, underneath the slab and do a further investigation. But we're not, we're not doing that at this time. So, this is simply just a reimbursement grant for monies that we've already expended for the hazardous materials assessment that was conducted in December 2022 and January 2023.
Questions are coming? Thank you.
You're welcome.
We've already, well, the next item is a garden fence for the new West Willow Neighborhood Association.
Yeah, I think Mrs. McCollum is here this evening on behalf of West Willow's Neighborhood Association. But our office was happy to put together sort of the packet information for your packet this evening. And per my memo, the planning department doesn't take any issue with the location of the garden fence.
So, I did have one question. Because at the Neighborhood Watch meeting last night, they asked, it sounds like it's ready to go. Is there anything else, like, if we approve it tonight, are they able to start work? Or like, are they going to need to do building permits or something else? Because I think they, you know, the weather and they want to get people to-
So, this one was actually one where planning department staff went ahead and approved the permit without the full understanding that they needed to get board approval, because it was a third party pulling a permit on behalf of township property. And so, we had to call Mrs. McCollum and say, could you please give us, offer some time for us to bring this matter before the board? And she was very understanding. And we helped her get all of the information that's in the packet to bring for you this evening so that you can look at it. And we would take no issue after this evening. If the board is amenable to the fence, we can release the zoning permit straight away, and they could begin working, you know, as early as tomorrow afternoon. So, yeah, so it's, it was one of those things where it was sort of, it was missed. We've done this before, like, with the veterans, when they built the shed and did the landscaping improvements, we worked with John Lucre, who's a part of the Veterans, Vietnam Veterans Association, to get the permits and the proper forms before the board to get approval prior to them building that addition at the memorial. So, it's, it was one of those things where we kind of got a little bit ahead of ourselves, and so now we're catching back up. But yes, we can, we can get the permit issued. Actually, it already has been issued, so to speak. We're just kind of getting the paperwork done.
A big thanks to you, Joanne, for working with the project and working with the departments. Thank you, Jason.
Next item is the request to approve the quote for BioCare for the fire department physicals. Is this the same company we've had previously? Okay. Yes, please.
Hello, Board. Steve Walgren, Fire Marshal. Yeah, this is, BioCare is the company we've always used. So, there was a little bit of plain catch-up between the previous chief and myself. And so, he had budgeted for it. It took us a little bit of a timeline to get all of the, to get all of the different, you can, you'll notice what I attached to it has several different options that BioCare offers. So, the chief had budgeted for it to be, to have these new ultrasounds, which is a cancer screening for firefighters in particular. And so, we have three firefighters who have cancer over the last five years. So, it's one of those things that we were sending people out through the medical field. They go to the hospital and try and track down their own, I guess, these services BioCare offers them. So, we got it within the budgeted amount, and that's-
And it's annually checked?
It is an annual checkup, yep. So, they do PSAs. I believe I attached the BioCare quote. And they do a number of chest x-rays, TV tests, several different cancer testing processes.
Question, that's good to know. Good job. Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a-
Expand it and include it.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Catching it early is important for us.
Questions are coming? Or the interim fire chief, Walgren?
Yes. So, these are performed on the fire, firemen and women and not prospective employees? Perspective-
Correct. This will include all of the new hires as well.
Okay.
So, so, just to go over, if you don't, or if you are not familiar with BioCare, they're a mobile hospital, basically. They bring all the technology to our station. Superior Township in Ypsilanti City also use them, well, multiple fire departments around use them as well. But Ypsilanti Township, our headquarters, is the, kind of the hub where they'll all come. And over a three-day, over a three-day period, they'll, we'll cycle all the people through. So, yeah, but this does include the new hires.
Questions are coming? Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
The next item is approve a change order with OHM for paving at the fire station number three located at 20 South Hewitt.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm not Matt Parks. There is quite a bit of traffic on I-94 tonight, so he will be here shortly and can speak on it on the general meeting.
Do you know what the change order is for?
I mean, my understanding is that it's for Station 3. And I saw that there was some communication this morning, but I can't speak to any of the details.
No problem. No problem.
All right, thanks.
Hello again. So, the change order was a, a couple of things we ran into, I believe, where there were some curbs that were added. We also had a drainage issue, which we had to reroute some drainage that, from the front parking lot out to the existing storm drain. And then, there's also an issue with, we have a loop in the front of the station that we were not, didn't take into consideration. The loop is when the fire trucks gets on top of it, puts the weight of the fire truck on it, turns- on it, turns all the lights red, and it gives us preemption so that we can drive out when we're going on a call. So those things were added, I think it was 11, I don't have the exact numbers. Correct, and still under budget, the 202,000 that was budgeted in there, so.
Questions are coming. I know we do have an issue with drainage that we're going to be looking at with Evan Pratt and...
Correct, correct. And I believe that that might have been a little bit, because we added some square footage of concrete, but it was also, I believe, a storm sewer backup that they had there as well. But we're looking to correct it all that to be good neighbors, so.
There's quite a flood there.
Yeah, there was, yeah, there was.
Quite a flood.
There was waist-deep water just off the concrete, so. But it was the, it was that large storm that we had several weeks back.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yeah.
Next item is to approve the change order for precision cutting for the sidewalk shaving in the amount of $27,396. Mr. Hines?
Good evening, John Hines, Municipal Services Director. Yes, I wanted to bring forward the change order with precision concrete cutting for the sidewalk shaving project that we started earlier this year. Earlier this year, the Board approved for sidewalks to be shaved in the Wendell Homes area, Rue Deville, Rue Willette. And it was originally quoted at just over $152,000. After they completed their work in late May and mid-June, it actually came to be about $27,400 less than what they quoted. So with that money, there were some emails that went back and forth earlier this year. We asked Precision Concrete Cutting to go back out and evaluate the West Willow Neighborhood to give us a list of streets they could do there. So Ben Johnson prepared a proposal, they're using the remaining funds that were already approved, that would get Tyler Road and then some of the neighborhood streets. And per my conversation with Attorney Winters and his letter he sent yesterday, if approved tonight, I would sit down with Ben and we would kind of evaluate the other streets outside of Tyler in the neighborhood, because their goal would be, is this is an NTE, not to exceed amount, to get as many complete streets and neighborhoods as we can, as possible, to not stop halfway through. And then with the streets not done with the remaining funds, potentially in next year's budget, we'll bring back a proposal for the rest. And if approved, their crew can be on hand in November to get done before the winter starts, which does give ample time to send a letter out to residents of the neighborhood.
Yeah, this was discussed several times in West Willow about the trip hazards and...
Yep.
We've done one, two, three, four neighborhoods on the furthest north, the northeast side, and we're moving this way. And they shave it off for trip hazards, if you will. Instead of digging the whole thing up and removing it, you can, you can actually reduce the potential...
You can get a lot more done for the price, too, because this...
Yeah, and quicker, you can do it much quicker. And then we also have another company that also comes in. If it's uneven, they can insert, inject cement down and raise it up. So West Willow Neighborhood Association, several times at the meetings, had talked about the need to have the sidewalks leveled. So this is going to be a beginning of it, and then we'll budget next year for the cost of it. We have $27,000 to go in and start on Tyler Road right now, which is where the main AAAT system is, and a lot of people walk up and down there. Question?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to just say that I'm so proud of our Board for doing this, and thank you, John, for cheering the project, because I know that we, there's actually a part, or a, you know, neighboring community that's actually levying property taxes on residents to fix their sidewalks, and it just causes an extra hardship for residents to have any extra unnecessary, you know, tax levy. So I'm glad that we're doing this and see our sidewalks and walkability in our community as a priority.
And I just want to say thank you to you, because when we saw that it came in with extra money, we could have, I mean, originally we could have just put it and waited till the next year, and I appreciate you going out, and I appreciate the company for looking at it again and then being willing to work with us. So thank you, let's us get more done. So I appreciate that.
Thank you all for the conversation.
All right, no more questions or comments. We'll go to the next item, which is to approve the agreement with OHM. They're not here, so we're going to wait until Matt gets here. We have one great representative, but we're going to wait for Matt, okay? Per the request. Traffic is bad, I agree with that. We'll go to Stantec, is Stantec here?
No.
Will they be at the regular meeting?
They will not. So I'm happy to give, I'm happy to give a brief synopsis on this, if you'd prefer. Okay. So this is a request to approve the change order with Stantec Consulting to provide urgent survey and civil engineering services related to the community center restroom renovation. This follows up on an email that I sent to the Board members and Attorney Winters on August 31st, which kind of follows up on the conversation we had at the last board meeting regarding the sanitary line underneath the community center. Per, actually, Trustee Swanson's discussion, when Jason from JTW Pipes came on site with Stantec to cam all the lines underneath the community center that would be affected by this project, unfortunately, the lines that go under Room 202, the senior coordinator's office, the sports storage system, the lobby, and the racquetball court, just to show how extensive that singular line is, it's beyond, beyond repair, it's deteriorated, there's just too many cracks, there's too many bellies, it's really just worse than we thought in terms of being able to repair it. So to quote Jason, as he said, "It is much easier to excavate outside the building than inside." Stantec has provided a proposal that shows their new plans and hopes for the line, and they needed this topo work to get done to see if it was feasible, which would be basically cutting off that damaged line at the section that it goes left towards the senior coordinator's office, and take it outside around the building, and then as well, there, thank you, Lisa, bring the other lines to meet outside as well, and then take all the lines to the sanitary drain behind the building on the golf course, in between the greens on holes nine and 18, just to kind of give you an idea. So it'd be a very extensive project. It would affect, obviously, the community center as well as areas of the golf course and their kind of prep area where the carts go and go around. But it is the path of least resistance, the cheapest option, and just the most feasible from what their proposal is. So this proposal for the change order is just on top of the funds they're allocated at the board meeting for their engineering services, just to get it done, to keep the timeline of bidding, which will be talked about later on in this meeting.
So this plan will have the part that's under the building is no longer going to be...
Yeah, so I know it's, I wish I could turn it, it's a little sideways, but basically the...
Too much?
Okay, so this is the troubled line right here. Basically, the place will be to put the packet right there and go forward to this green line all around the building, because that's what you kind of see from the picture. That's either 202, or that's, if it holds up, is the sports storage lobby and the racquetball court.
So the pink line is another line that's going to stay in the building?
All the, all the lines that are inside are going to come outside as fast as they can. So that's kind of the tricky part. This line, so go a few meters and come out, and link up with the green line as well. They're all going to meet at this line and go down like a golf course. So I know it's a little hard and a bad angle. Yeah, well, I appreciate, you know, Stantec and CAS for coming out, because they were there for about three hours and very diligent in, in their research. No, no, I appreciate you for turning it, they made it easier.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Anything, am I missing? We're going to go to, huh? Yeah, that's where it's going to go, to the public nuisance, if we could skip down to that, which is number 12, 13, and 14. Director Kingsley, these are requests for Circuit Court litigation. And abate a public nuisance, if necessary, that's what we have.
Good evening, Board, Belinda Kingsley, Community Compliance Director. I have three different properties tonight that we're seeking authorization to bring Circuit Court litigation to public, to abate public nuisances. So the first one is 1039 Parkwood Avenue. I know you've had several letters about this one, but they had a significant fire in May, on May 29th this year, and it's a, it was a rental property, it was deemed a total loss, and at this point needs to be demolished. It's in a densely populated neighborhood and is an attractive nuisance for children in the neighborhood, a potential danger. And we started working with the property owner who lives out of state on June 1st, and requested that the debris be removed to clean up the exterior of the property, and also began the process of demolishing it. He has not been cooperative and responsive to our notice of violations. So at this point, we've asked for approval to begin Circuit Court, Circuit Court litigation, and request an order authorizing the township to select a contractor to demolish this structure and use the Act 495 funds to do so.
Questions are coming.
I'm wondering about rats, or vermin, or what are we supposed to call them? Vermin, vermin? Has any assessment been done to see if there's an infestation there? So that we can make sure if there is an order that no demolition takes place until that's addressed, so that they don't move into the neighborhood?
We have not had Orkin review this particular property. We have not had complaints from the neighbors, you know, that they, that they're witnessing any type of rat activity, which is usually kind of our trigger to bring Orkin in when there's been a sighting. We could...
I think I'd, I'd like that to happen, just because often by the time we're seeing the infestations, already gotten to a point where they're there. So if that's possible, I would like to see that happen.
We can definitely do that.
Makes sense, that's what we did for Debbie Court, too.
And with the, you know, the current situation of that being concerning in quite a few neighborhoods, it may just have to be part of our process now, if we're in that kind of a situation that we automatically make sure that that's checked.
Yeah, we, we do have a good relationship with Orkin at this point, and they're very responsive, and usually when we call them, they're out there the next day to do an evaluation. So that's definitely something we can do.
Any other comments?
Okay, the next one is 867 Debbie Court. And this is one where we did have sightings by the neighbors, that there was a rat infestation. On August 8th, we were notified by a neighbor that the home was vacant and infested with rodents that were impacting their property. August 9th, we were out there to do an investigation, went through our normal process of giving a notice of violation to the property owner to clean the property. There was blight, trash outdoors, odors coming from the home, branches, inoperable vehicle, damaged fencing, in addition to the rodent infestation, and the grass was not in compliance. Orkin did go out and right away investigate this one, do an assessment. September 6th, we had, we gained authorization for administrative search warrant to go inside the property. And Orkin did accompany our inspectors when they went in. They documented the unsanitary conditions inside the property. And Orkin had already started a, you know, program outdoors, and also was investigating the, evaluating the properties that were adjoining, there are seven different properties that signed an authorization to allow us to enter their property and evaluate it. Orkin did evaluate the interior on September 6th, and is treating the indoors inside of the property now, too.
Questions are coming.
Madam Chair, real quickly, just to sort of amplify what Trustee Swanson brought up earlier, this is the property that's already impacted negatively, I think, seven other properties nearby. So Orkin is actually under contract for not only this one in Debbie Court, but I think six more also on Debbie Court. And given the length of time on this, on the one on Parkwood, for example, and the one that Belinda will be discussing next, regards to the address on South Lawn, given the gap of time between when the fire occurs and the time in which we're getting these in front of, you know, all of you, I think the Orkin assessment has to be almost a standard type of requirement, because especially in the fires, where many times people leave behind just large quantities of food, and the Fire Department does what they should be doing, going out there condemning it, locking it up, but then when there's this time delay between the insurance company, the homeowner, or whoever used to live there, that's where everything seems to kind of start festering, and where things just kind of exponentially increase. And so that's probably going to be a routine request, as well, but Debbie Court actually involves seven other homeowners already. But it's not fair, it's not fair to them to have one house impact on any of the significant...
Thank you, Mr. Winer. Next?
Okay, the last one is 3110 South Lawn, and this is another one that there was a fire, it was on February 17th of this year. And the home was unlivable after the fire. The concern with this property was the photos that we had from the Fire Department that showed there was an excessive amount of contents, including food source for rodents inside of the house. We had a, did a search warrant, administrative search warrant on August 29th, and confirmed that, that the material is still inside. You know, we didn't see any sign of rodents, and we hadn't had any complaints, but still that could be evaluated by professionals. There wasn't over an inch of standing water in the basement, which is, does attract rodents, because they're looking, they're always looking for a water source. Basically, this is one that's just, you know, stood while they were negotiating with their insurance company, and it just, at this point, just needs to move forward and either be rehabbed, which it could be, or demolished.
Thank you. Would you like to take a break before the regular meeting? Would that be all right? All right, thanks. Meeting, 6:48.